Good evening and welcome to everyone. I'd like to call the November fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-three Planning Commission Regular Meeting to order. The Planning Commission is holding hybrid meetings. Members of the public can attend the meeting in person or observe the meeting on Zoom, online by visiting www.cityofarcada.org and following the "Live Meetings" link at the bottom of the city's homepage or on the city's YouTube channel. If you're attending remotely, please be aware that the Zoom feed provides the closest-to-real-time stream. If you rely on the other feeds and you wish to make comments, please be aware of the time lag on those feeds. The first item on our agenda is the land acknowledgement. The city of Arcata acknowledges that the lands we are located on are the unceded ancestral lands of the Wiat tribe. The land that Arcata rests on is known in the Wiat language as "gudene," meaning "over in the woods or among the redwoods." Past actions by local, state, and federal governments removed the Wiat and other indigenous peoples from the land and threatened to destroy their cultural practices. The city of Arcata acknowledges the Wiat community, their elders both past and present, as well as future generations. This acknowledgement seeks to aid in dismantling the legacy narratives of settler colonialism. Next is roll call. Staff, will you please call roll?
Yeah, Commissioner Simmons?
Here.
Commissioner Strickland?
President.
Commissioner Yodowitz?
Here.
Commissioner Lehman?
Here.
And Chair Davies?
Here.
And we're joined by Commissioner Mayor.
Hello, I'm here too.
I'm here too.
We are joined as well this evening by Community Development Director David Loyah and Senior Planner Joe Matier. Next, we have public comment. During this time, people may make comments about items that are not on the agenda. If you wish to speak on one of our agenda items, you will have an opportunity when we are discussing those items. If you have comments about items that are not listed on our agenda today, please line up now behind the lectern. In the interest of fairness to all commenters, if you begin talking about items that are on the agenda, I will gently interrupt you and direct you to share those comments during the appropriate agenda item. If you are on Zoom and you wish to make oral communications on matters that are not on today's agenda, please raise your hand by selecting the "Raise Hand" icon on the right side of your screen or by pressing star nine if you are calling in. For those on Zoom, when it is your turn to speak, the clerk will unmute you. With that, I'd like to open public comment. Each speaker will have three minutes to comment during early oral communications. Feel free to state your name for the record. May we have the first speaker, please?
Oh, new microphone. I hadn't noticed. I am ceding my time to Fred Wise.
Yes, good evening. I'm Fred Wise with ArcataOne.com. First, there's a small typo. It says "Item A." It says "General Plan." It's actually the Gateway Area Plan Updates that you'll be discussing tonight as the description indicates. Many of you in the commission are aware that on the agenda for the city council tomorrow, it's scheduled a item. The Community Development Director is requesting direction from the council on, quote, "whether to retain the Gateway Area Plan as a standalone element of the general plan, applicable only in the Gateway Area," or, "or distribute the new policy into other general plan elements to be applicable citywide," end quote. He wrote "or," so the assumption is that if the gateway policies that you've been working on all this time are put into the general plan, that would mean the end of the actual Gateway Area Plan. It would not be required. In the agenda packet, the director lists one hundred and twenty-three gateway policies and where they could be put into the general plan. Among these are, quote, "allow for buildings over four stories using Community Benefits Program," and on about the Community Benefits Program and open space. This would then be a citywide policy, buildings of four, five, six, or seven stories throughout the entirety of Arcata. The question is, how can the gateway policies be put into the place throughout all of Arcata? To be clear, I want to make sure you know, and I know, there are many policies that you've developed that are easily transferable and would be great for on a citywide policy. I have made a spreadsheet of the one hundred and twenty-three policies that are listed, so we can extract them, sort them, et cetera. If you want a copy of the spreadsheet, please ask. But the major policies for the Gateway Area Plan do not transfer well. In the ArcataOne.com portal page for you, at ArcataOne.com slash PC, you will find an article on retaining the Gateway Area Plan for Gateway or making its policies be citywide. At the end of the article are the policies that I think would be difficult or impossible to implement as part of a general plan on a citywide basis. There's also a list of policies that I think would be difficult to implement or be successful even within the Gateway Area. I wanted to know where the idea for moving gateway policies to the general plan came from. The director wrote in the council packet, quote, "Several decision-makers and community members saw benefit in not restricting this new body of policy to just the Gateway Area but rather incorporate it citywide," end quote. I wrote to him. He told me that Councilmember Akun Salazar, Councilmember Stillman, and Commissioner Mayor brought this up at the Council Commission Joint Study Session on October twenty-fourth. If you're inclined, you can go to ArcataOne.com, the same article, ArcataOne.com slash PC, and view the videos of that meeting and the word-for-word transcription of what the decision-makers actually said. Here's the problem. What they said had nothing to do with putting gateway policies into the general plan. They talked about how neighborhoods need to be treated differently. They talked about using form-based codes in other areas, and for infill opportunities zones was brought up. No one said, "Let's make the gateway policies be citywide." No one said, "Let's dissolve the Gateway Area Plan and put its policies into the general plan," and no one said, "Let's allow buildings of four stories and taller and eliminate maximum residential densities for all of Arcata." No one said any of that. If there are other decision-makers in this room or elsewhere who have said that, it was not at that meeting. If any of you are present, please let the public know that you are suggesting four-story buildings and taller for all of Arcata. I regard this proposal from the Community Development Director as both deceitful and insulting. I think it's deceitful to the people of Arcata, who for more than two years have been given details about a housing and redevelopment plan that is intended strictly for the one hundred and thirty-eight acre, roughly seventy-block region that we call the Gateway Area. And I consider it insulting to the work that you, as a commission, have done, developing this area plan with all the issues and considerations that are specific to this area. I do not expect the city council to accept this proposal from the director, but we'll see. It happens tomorrow. It really brings up the question as to what he is thinking. From my viewpoint, you have so much work still ahead of you. We really want to see a great plan come out of this work with workforce-affordable housing, with home ownership options, with actual open space within the Gateway Area for people to sit, walk, talk, congregate. In other words, we want a delightful neighborhood for Arcata. I know you want the same thing. Thank you.
Thanks for your comments, Fred.
Good evening. My name's Joanne McGary, and I really appreciate everything Fred says from this podium, and I hope you as well appreciate, because he really is caring and concerned about our community, our city, our town, Arcata, as am I. And I have shared this in the past, that history is important to look at. The history of our town and things that happened in our town over time. And I see that the city has just put up a written land acknowledgement in one of their display cases here. It's the first time I've seen it. I think it must be a fairly recent addition. But it's really important that we look at that and remember that history. But I also think it's important on other issues involving the planning of our community that we look at things from the past and how actions were taken. A good example is the McKinley statue, to bring up a sore subject for some people, but also an enlightened one for others. And I think it's important to notice that when the McKinley statue was brought here in nineteen oh six from San Francisco on a boat, its initial location was not to be in the center of the town, but the artist, when he arrived with the statue, said, "It must be." And the town leaders, within three days, made the decision to accommodate that one person's desire, take down the gazebo in the center of the plaza, and put up a statue that lasted in the center of our plaza for one hundred and fourteen years. And it took a lot of public input and voting, the democracy in our town, of what we wanted to have happen in our town a few years ago that removed that McKinley statue. I think he's in a much better place right now in Canton, Ohio, and I think we are much better off not having that. But that was a process that was decided by a group of townspeople in our community. And back one hundred and fourteen years prior, it was decided by a small, little cadre of people within three days. So any decisions that we make here, especially when it comes to planning and cementing things in place and building things up high that are difficult to bring down unless there's a major earthquake or something, or a fire. But the thing is, we as community, and you as those who chose to be on this planning commission, please, 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 remember that you are here for the greater good and the greater community in the decisions that you are making to proceed into the future. Streamlining things is not the best thing all the time, so thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Joanne. Do we have any more commenters here that would like to speak? Head on up.
Good evening. It's Jane Woodward.
Oh, sorry.
Sorry about the "Ollie" part. I didn't change my name from an "Ollie" course that I was hosting. I want to second a great deal of what Fred said. Fred probably has invested more time and energy into researching and writing about all these things that anybody that I can imagine, and trying to make the information available to the public. I wanted to point out, for historical purposes, that I do recall Judith Mayer saying that some of these concepts from the Gateway Area do belong elsewhere in the community, but I don't think she was meaning that we'd take the Gateway Plan lock, stock, and barrel and translate it citywide. So I just want to point out that this whole concept, who knows where it came from, who originated it, but clearly it isn't what was said in the meeting, assuming Fred's comments are correct. And everybody should go and look and see what was actually said. Many of the concepts, a number of the concepts in terms of building and development may well want to be applied to other areas of Arcata, but judiciously and where they belong. So that's something that I think this whole issue should be on the agenda for the next planning commission, so you can have a discussion. Obviously, you can see what happens tomorrow. But I think you're going to have a very upset community if you try to take the entire package and translate it to the entire city. Thank you.
Thanks for your comments, Jane. Do we have other online commenters, David?
No, we don't. Sorry about the confusion.
Come on up.
Hi, my name's Gail McDowell, and I'm not even sure if this is the proper place for this, but I was just involved in the rental inspection program, and it went very well, so I think it's a good idea that you did that. I do have questions, and I probably should have called somebody in the city office about Airbnb short-term rentals. Are they taxed more? I'd like to know about that. And then San Francisco just implemented a new city tax on empty houses, and I wonder if that could be considered, because I see a lot of empty houses around town, and I think they should be taxed more if they're not full of people. So, and I love the sidewalk work you're doing and the pop-outs and all that. I don't know if that was federal or California, but I think it'll be good for pedestrian safety, so thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments, Gail. No commenters. Okay. Thank you, everyone, for your comments. As always, we appreciate your participation and your input. We will now move to Item Three on our agenda this evening, Consent Calendar. All items on the consent calendar are considered to be routine by the commission and are enacted in one motion. Commissioners or members of the public can request that an item be removed for separate discussion. The only item on our consent calendar this evening is Item A, Approved Planning Commission Minutes, Regular Meeting, October ten, two thousand and twenty-three. Do any planning commissioners wish to pull this consent item, or does any member of the public or staff wish to pull this consent item? Concerns? No? Is there a motion to approve the consent calendar?
All motion to approve the consent calendar.
You have a motion to approve. Do we have a second?
All second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Next item on our agenda this evening is Public Hearings. We have one public hearing this evening, and that is to consider an action to approve or deny a design review permit and minor use permit for the Morehouse Carport Structures at one-one-five-eight, one-one-six-eight, one-one-seven-eight, and one-one-eight-eight Tenth Street, file number two-two-three-dash-zero-three-five. Can we begin, please, with a staff report?
Yeah, thank you, Chair. I'll start out talking a little bit about process. We have new commissioners who haven't done a discretionary review before, and we also have public members who may be a little unclear on the process as well, so we wanted to start with that. Joe will then take you through the project and the approval process, and then we'll get into public comment. So this is a discretionary review project. It's subject to the planning commission's decisions as to whether or not the project findings can be made and that it comports with our design guidance. And so obviously, we're starting with a staff report. The next stage will be questions of staff, so the chair will lead us through if there are any questions from the planning commission about the staff report. And that sets the stage so that the public can know what it is that's at issue and, you know, what the decision hinge points are. After that, you'll open it up for public comment. The applicant will have the first turn at public comment, and generally, the chair does not limit the applicant's ability to present material for as long as they need to present, so that they can make their case, since this is a land use decision that affects them personally. And then you'll provide three minutes per person to speak on the project. Folks will have to limit their comments to specifically this project. And then at the end of that, the applicant will have the opportunity to make any kind of rebuttal, and so applicants should be prepared after listening to public comment that was made, if they have any follow-up comments, to do so. After that time, you'll close public comment and go into deliberations. And at that point, the commission can ask other clarifying questions, either of staff or of the applicant. We'd encourage you, if you are asking of the applicant questions, that they're clarifying and not back-and-forth deliberative with the applicant to the extent that you can. But this is really an opportunity for the planning commission to work through the concepts that were presented, both in the staff report and in the oral presentations that you've heard and public comment, so that you can make those decisions about being able to make findings or not. At that point, you will be making one of a couple of different decisions. Joe's going to go into a little bit more detail about the way that the decision is structured in this particular instance, but your decisions would fall under either, we don't have enough information at this time to make a decision, so we're going to continue the item. We have enough information, and we're going to deny the item, deny the proposal. We're going to approve the proposal with conditions, as proposed, or we're going to approve the project with new conditions that come from the public testimony that happens tonight, from the deliberations that you have. And so I just wanted to, you know, open it up. We've had a lot of projects that come before you that are limited in your decision-making capacity because of the Housing Accountability Act or for other reasons. Your discretion was somewhat limited. In this instance, your discretion is complete. You have authority to use your discretion, make this subjective decision based on the information that's presented to you and the facts that are in the staff report. So any questions about process before I turn it over? Commissioner Mayor? Commissioner Mayor?
Yeah, I noticed in the packet, you have included draft findings to support approval, but you have also included draft findings that would support denial. My understanding is that although the findings to support approval are required, that we typically don't necessarily provide item-by-item findings to support denial, and that that is not required, or it's not required for one of the types of approvals that's being sought, but it may be sort of required for the other, but certainly not an itemized list as it's been presented in the staff report. I'm wondering if you could explain that.
Sure. And Joe is going to go into a little bit more detail about the different findings and how those different decision points should be made. And it is true, if you decide to deny the project, you're not required to make findings for denial. It is an option for you, however, to make findings for denial, and it strengthens the record, the public record, if you do make that decision. So you're right, you're not required to make findings for denial, but it's good practice. Joe, I'll turn it over to you.
Yes, good evening. Before you this evening is a designer view, minor use permit application for the development of carports on an existing developed site. It's on the corner of 10th and L Street here in Arcata. There's the site there. We have, the site is at this corner here. The Humboldt Bay Trail goes along here. This is L Street. Jolly Giant Creek goes along here. We have K Street along here. The Creamery Building is located this site right there. For some context to it, a little closer view of it, this is part of the Lord House right here, was developed in the late 1800s. These two duplexes were developed in '49, and this five-plex was developed in 1950. Mentioned the Bay Trail goes along to the west. L Street is also to the west. It's located in the Creamery District, Area B, so the industrial limited two development standards do apply. And then I mentioned Jolly Giant Creek, that is undergrounded right here along the corner. 10th Street is south, and it is also a bicycle boulevard. You see the little chevrons there for that. In 2013, the site underwent some major renovation there, where this building was moved from right about here. These two are very close together, and it was moved over here. There was a parking area. These gables ends were added on to the structure, kind of a craftsman style. They did pave the different parking areas here, along here. This is the five-plex. This did also get some architectural enhancements from the original design, and then some side parking lot improvements, and they put in solid waste and recycling. We have storm drain areas throughout the site here in various locations for stormwater control. There was also some other improvements done to the Lord House, the original structure on the site, to kind of bring it back some of that historical context that it had. You know, certainly, development did occur right next to it. This is a multi-use building. German Motors, you know, is one of the main anchor tenants there, clothing dock and other stuff. The climbing gym is in this area here, and another little office there. And then we do have redevelopment over on this side, and of course, we have the car wash to the south. The recommendation is to consider the action. So as the Director indicated, one of the considerations on that action would be to approve with findings, recommended findings and conditions. And so we developed those recommended conditions based on our staff review and input from referral departments and agencies. Within this, number one, you could, of course, approve the project with revised findings and conditions. So through your deliberation, you may find that, for instance, you could decide that maybe you don't want a carport structure in any of the setback areas. So you could add that as a condition of approval. That minor use permit would go away, and so would the exemption for the site modification. So there would be kind of a trickle-down effect that would happen there. Two would be deny the action with recommended findings, and as the Director indicated, those could just be a straight denial without having those findings. Or you can continue the public hearing to obtain more information if you feel that you would like to have that. The recommended conditions of approval include the findings, and it has two. First of all, we want to do the environmental adoption, if we're going to approve it. The environmental review, there's a Class III and Class V exemption. Class III is for small structures, and Class V is for minor alterations to land use limitations, and that covers the site modifications for the encroachment into the setback and vision clearance area. The action is found as Attachment A. Findings of approval will be Exhibit 1. Conditions of approval would be 2, and the project plans are part of Exhibit 3, so that action includes all three of those exhibits. If there was a recommendation for denial, the action would be, you know, amending the action for denial, and then completing the findings of denial, and as we discussed, that would be optional for you. And then I thought it'd be good to include the project plans, just so we know what was looked at and what was denied, kind of for that public record as indicated by the Director as well. The findings of denial, there's no environmental review findings required, and there would be no conditions of review required as well. So that's what I just want to point out for that action. Ooh, that's a nice graphic for flexibility. So the action and findings were developed to allow a lot of leeway, a lot of flexibility with the planning commission. So the action itself, it starts out with the approve the action, and it has both the environmental review and then the appropriate findings and conditions of approval and the plans. Or you could then do the denial aspect of it. In this case, it would have the action for findings for denial there as well. I noticed that doesn't say plans that we'd want to include. The findings of approval allow flexibility. So throughout the findings, you'll see that there'll be, in some cases, an is or is not compatible, does or does not. And so in this case, as an example, the proposed shed roof design, you know, is or is not compatible with the existing structure that feature gable-end roofs, porches, penements, dormers, knee braces, and a flat roof. Most of them are slope roofs, but the five-plex does have a low slope to that one as well. As an example here, we have Carport 1 and Carport 2. This is in the southwest parking area, or southeast parking area, excuse me. So this would be Carport 1 facing north. It would be sloping to the north. This is a steel beam right here. They do have two-by-six-inch decking material that would be visible in from the inside. Here is the beam for the holding up that you see that's relevant there. This one would hold, I think it's two parking spaces, it could be three, but I know this one is one. And so this is an example of, you know, do we find architectural compatibility with it? And then you do see some of the roof lines, it slopes here, and there's also a sloping here, and then this one would be sloping back to the north on that one there. Scale, that's another one of the findings that is in the action. And the scale really depends on the size and location, how big the buildings are next to you, what it is, and what you're proposing to do. And so scale, if it's a very large structure that's set way far away, it has kind of a less impact on the human scale aspect of that. But anywhere where you're near a street or sidewalk, that usually has a larger impact to the human scale of that. It does note that we do have, as I mentioned, all the carports are within a setback. Some of them are street setbacks, and others are in side yard setbacks. So 2, 3, and 4 are in the streets setbacks, and then 1 and 5 are in the side yard setbacks. And then, as in Carport 1 and 5, they're set, those are set further away from the street, and so they might not, if you're looking at the pedestrian scale, the walkability from a street or sidewalk, they would maybe have a lesser impact. And I will get into some of the conditions and recommendations by other referral agencies regarding that note, but this is just another example of the flexibility, is the carport scale compatible with the existing scale. This is a in situ rendition, the only one that was provided with the application material. This would be Carport 1, so it is a two-car spot, and here's the one car space there. So this does give a little bit of a, you know, the sidewalk is just right along here, 10th Street. And it also shows some of the, kind of the clutter that staff was concerned about. Posts along here, you have the walkway, there's just a lot of things. This is a small, looks like a utility closet, that would be very close to that roofline edge there, and we just have a lot of buildings going in different areas. The carports are a feature that have been requested by the tenants of the site. They, you know, it's a wonderful site since the 2013 improvements. I mean, I can't, I mean, really, this was a wonderful renovation that the property owners did in 2013 for various reasons that not only improved the tenants' use of the property, but water quality, air quality for the community members, but also the inherent value that the public gains by walking by and seeing a wonderful site in that Lord House is now opened up with views from 10th Street there. So, you know, they do certainly have reasons for and desire to have carports there, but staff has been a little concerned about being able to make the findings, and that is partly why we have the project before the planning commission. This is an illustration of the entire site. Carport 1, 2, 3, 4, and 5. We have a duplex here. These are the two duplexes. This is the five-plex, and then the Lord House. And you can see that this building next door is really, really close and encroaching into the Lord House. But this is the 10-foot setback, the blue line, so you can see that every carport is affected somehow by one of those. And this is just an example of close-up of Carport 1. This is the only carport that serves, I mean, Carport 2. This only serves one vehicle, and you can see that a majority of the carport would be in the 10-foot setback. This is the largest, so we have the smallest and the largest carport. And this is on the corner of 10th and L, and so L Street is up here. And again, this is the 10-foot line, so a majority of this portion of the carport is located in the street side yard setback. Carport 4 and 5, they're in the northwest parking area, and they have minimal, this would be here, potentially one parking space, and then this one is, again, just maybe one space that is located in the 10-foot setback there. So this is up against the, on the east side of the parking area in the Lord House, the back of the Lord House is back here. These two carports go over one another a little bit, and then this is the place where we get into the gas line as well. The vision clearance areas, again, this is the entire site. Vision clearance areas are designed for public safety to not only the motor vehicle travelers, but also people, pedestrians and bicycles and other people that roll or other mobile methods. And it's intended for a 15-foot. Vision clearance triangle is established for driveways and interior property lines. A 20-foot vision clearance is established on street corners, and we see an example of it here. Theoretically, there would be another one on this side that would go off towards the east here, but it's not showing because it's not being affected by the project itself. So this shows that there are portions of that post that would be right here would be in the vision clearance area. And then this has two different vision clearance, basically to measure, you start here, measure 20 feet this direction, go back to the point of beginning, go 20 feet in this direction, and then connect the dots there. So anything less than 36 inches is typically allowed in that area. They do have, the code does prohibit parking spaces in there, which we do have, you know, this particular one already has parking in there. This is a loading space for the accessible parking here. So this one has a potential vision clearance conflict with not only the driveway, but also the street corner one here. And this is probably the most visible carport. It's the largest one. It's basically right on the sidewalk, very little room for, you know, kind of a safe zone between a backing-out vehicle or the sidewalk there. And then there's really no other structures nearby except for the five-plex to the north of that. Then as we get into the northwestern parking lot, this one here is affected by, it looks like it's going to affect two parking spaces, and then this one does have the interior property line and the driveway parking that has encumbrances into the setback area. So yeah, Carports 2, 3, and 4 have portions within the vision clearance area. These are a little closer shots of those. Carport 2, on the southeast corner, this is the southwest corner parking lot, the five parking spaces, and then this one back here on the Carport 4. The city engineer made a referral that they are asking for no portion of the carport within a vision clearance area. So that is one of the recommended conditions of approval that staff has made. So how, if we approved the project, how would we address that? We would address that by having a carport, it would be half a carport for here, in this section, so the post would have to be out here. Every portions of the shed would have to be out of there, or eliminate this one. This one would have to be moved over, so the car, the carport would not be able to, posts would not be in this area, or any of the shed roof would be in this area. It potentially could cover some of these parking spaces. This one would eliminate two parking, covered parking spaces, and then we could get a small three-car park one there as well. So those would be how to possibly modify the project, if you're interested in that. Pacific Gas and Electric provided a referral, and they said, well, we don't want any carports over existing gas lines. And originally, we thought, the owner indicated to me that the gas line was probably over or under Carport 4, so we would eliminate that. And then PG&E thought it was over 5, so we're really not sure. And so a condition of approval has been crafted to allow the project to be approved and then modified to meet those needs. So if PG&E says, yes, it is over 4, that carport potentially could be eliminated, or if it's over 5, or both of them. And again, I think there's flexibility in that, in that if the gas And again, I think there's flexibility in that, in that if the gas line is, you know, maybe a modification to the design of the carport could be approved, that would allow still some covered parking to meet those tenant needs and desires there. This is the statement they made. So we cannot have any carports over gas distribution services. So that's how we added that, that condition of approval. So again, we kind of have these different recommendations here. Approve with the recommended findings and conditions. Approve with the revised findings and conditions if you are, find that applicable. Deny with the findings. And again, we discussed that is optional. Or continue the public hearing if you have any further questions or desire to see different architectural elevations into renditions, maybe some different styles there for that as well. For the findings of approval, it would include the environmental categorical exemptions for class three and a class five. Now, as I discussed, the minor alteration to the, this one could be eliminated. This one is only included if there's a deviation to the site standards, the setbacks or the vision clearance area. So if carports were designed to not have any of those encroachments into those areas, that, this exemption would not be necessary. And then, you know, the design would be, and minor use permit would be in compliance with the general plan and land use code if you can find so. The denial, there are no environmental findings required for a project that is denied. And then, you know, the findings would indicate that the project is not in compliance with the land use code or the general plan and design policies. The recommended conditions of approval, vision clearance areas, no portion of carport structures in vision clearance areas, that is a public safety thing. There are existing parking spaces that are in that vision clearance area now. The land use code says no parking shall be in vision clearance areas. That was, occurred with the 2013. And so we deemed that that waiver or that approval occurred through that design review and building permit process. So we're not asking those parking spaces be removed at all. But the, the engineer doesn't want to increase and add more physical development in that vision clearance areas. With a carport that's open on all sides and has a six or five by five post, you know, a lot of the visibility will be, lack of visibility will be with the car there. And so we do understand that. The carports are open, there's four posts that hold these up, but still, the city engineer was adamant that we don't allow any more structures in the vision clearance areas. And that would be same with the gas line safety. And this would affect carports four or five, or both, if it, gas lines happen to affect both of those carports itself. That's it. I did want to, I know that we received two written comments of support from community members that are encouraging the planning commission to go ahead and approve the project as prepared by the applicants. And then there was a kind of discrepancy sometimes in the staff report or in the notice regarding the number of structures. At one time, we eliminated one of the carports based on the PG&E comments. So I know that the public notice says that there's four carports. And then I think even in my staff report, I might have muddled some of those numbers there. So I do apologize for those inconsistencies. David talked about the hearing process, and I think I'm going to rest. And just feel free to answer any questions you may have for me.
Thanks very much for that, Joe. Yeah, that was great. I appreciate the clear and detailed presentation. I'd like to, at this point, just check in and see if there are any questions from planning commissioners on the staff report.
I have a question. Okay, great, thanks. So I was reading the staff report, and it says that there's no outdoor lighting plan that was included in the application material. And I noticed that there's a lamp post. I was able to visit the site at night, and it's right in front of carport. It's on the west side of carport number two, the singular carport. And I just was wondering if we should include the lamp post on the plan so that when we ensure that the outdoor lighting is consistent with the code, that staff know to look at that lamp post.
Appreciate bringing that up. Those lamp posts were previously approved through the 2012, 2013 renovation at the site. What we're looking at is a notation on one of the sheets that says there's going to have security LED lighting, and it's not real clear where that is in the carport area itself. We do have outdoor lighting protection measures in the land use code, and so we do have a standard condition of approval that is included there as well. We don't require dark sky friendly certified lighting, but we know that if you do use that type of lighting fixture, they're going to meet our, our code. In these areas with the carports facing the public street, the concern is that we could have light pollution that is going out into, or affecting even traffic as, as vehicles are driving by. I mean, lighting is almost like cars, you know, it's either too much light or not enough, or too much parking and not enough parking. So, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Go ahead, Joel.
It was hard for me to read the really fine prints, so this information may be there, but are the materials of all the five carports identical? And is the overall build of the, of those five carports identical? The roof may be a different angle, but other than, than that, are they all the same or are they different?
Yes, my understanding that all materials are going to be exactly the same. It's just that based on the size and location is going to be the difference.
And the render, can you go back to, there's one image of the rendering of what they actually Yeah, that's, that's it. What, could you describe what the posts are, what the beams are, what the roof is in terms of the materials?
The posts are five by five inch with beam saddle and top steel level base plate at bottom of top of 16-inch concrete pier. And then two is... Oh, just the, the post itself there, that's the concrete pier design. Existing concrete slab we have here.
I've located it in the staff report. It might be a little more layman's terms. So it sounds like the roofs have two by eight wood decking with typical roofing material above, and the wood decking, rather than plywood, would be used. So that's what I found.
So this is a steel beam here, and, and then there'll be two by six, 10 is a two by six wood rafter. And, yeah, so these, where's my, right along there.
And I believe the applicant can explain the design as well, if you have additional questions, or if they need to clarify things that we haven't portrayed correctly.
Go ahead, Matt.
So this might be more of a question for the applicant, but I'll just flag it. Is the envisioned security lighting permanent lighting, or sort of like motion activated, you know, every time someone walks by on 10th Street, it'll flash a light? And then the second question is about the 2013 process. You mentioned that the parking spaces are within the vision clearance area, and I was wondering if you knew whether that sort of non-conforming use was discussed in the 2013 process, or whether that was just sort of a oversight of a big, you know, development?
There was an explicit condition in that approval that said if there was encroachment into the vision clearance triangle, it needed to be approved by the city engineer. The, the city engineer is the, you know, the department head for the building division. And ultimately, those plans were approved through the building division. They would have received theoretically a, you know, review by planning as well. And so, you know, in a perfect world, everything was done appropriately. What we can tell from the record at this point is that we did approve that. They have a planning approval that says you can do it, and they have a building permit that says you can do it.
Any other questions? Okay. At that point, we will open public comment for this item. If you have comments on this item you would like to make, please line up at the podium. As per usual, the applicant will have the first opportunity to speak. The applicant will be untimed, but the public will be provided three minutes each to speak on this item. The applicant will have an additional opportunity at the end to clarify or rebut any public comment. Let's begin with the applicant.
Hi. I hope I don't go over three minutes, but we'll find out.
You can take your time. We're not timing you.
My name is Catherine Stokes-Moorehouse, and I am the applicant, along with my husband, Fred Morehouse. And thank you very much for taking the time to consider this, and also thank you for serving on the planning commission, which I know sometimes is a very thankless, thankless job. So I hope I'm going to be thanking you, but we'll find out later. So this proposal, even though David indicated it was for our benefit, it's, it's not for our benefit. We don't live there. I mean, the people who, this is for the benefit of the people who live at 1158, 1168, 1178, and 1188, 10th Street. And so this was suggested to us by one of our residents, who's right here tonight, who said his car, his, his specimen car, and it is a specimen car, was, he was having to paint it too often because of the sun fading from the, the western exposure of the sun. And I sat there and I thought, oh, no, I don't, I do not want carports here. And then I thought, wait a minute, the carports are going to be around the edge. They're not going to be in the middle where we have created this view shed. So I thought, oh, okay, well, we'll look into it. And so, as you know, there's, there's a picture of a, a carport that was in the strip along L Street in 1983. And that, along with three other structures, were torn down by me to avoid having them fall on somebody and hurt them. And so you can see that this design is very similar to what was there before. And I will say this, my husb, neither my husband and I are wedded to that slope. We can go down if, if the planning commission thinks it's more appropriate. We have worked very hard to enhance the living experience for the people who live at the complex, and the result is which, we have an average residency in the complex of five years. And that ranges from 36 years to a few months. So that 36-year guy kind of really stretches the average out a lot, but still, he's, as I say to everybody, he's been with me longer than my husband. So, and I wanted to, yes, my husband and I have been married for a long time. So I want to stress that there's no rent increase associated with this. What we, we're not particularly aggressive with rents. We do raise, I'm not saying we don't raise rents, because we do. But we tend to raise them every couple of years for the existing tenants, and it's usually the newer people who come in who pay the, the highest prices for, for, for the units. I have owned this complex since 1976. And let's go for the before picture, Joe. That's a way before. This is what it looked like when I bought it. And this is what it looked like up until December 2nd of night of 2012, which is right before we started construction. And after I owned the property for a while, and after my mortgage got paid down sufficiently so I could get my new financing, I realized that all I really had to do was move this one building over. That's all I had to do. And, and I figured out that with a little bit of work, there was parking area in back, I had the room to do it. And so it, it took me a while to put it together, and my husband thought I was out of my mind, but then, there you go. So in 2013, we did the renovation, and we can show the renovated view. Click. Here we go. And this view would be unaffected by these carports. Won't make any difference at all. Can you shrink that down so we see all of the picture a little bit, Joe? Oops, we're still, I'm going to keep on going.
If we hold control and do the mouse wheel, it shoots them out.
There we have a technical expert in the crowd, yes. So the city position is that, we've heard from the engineer, and he says you can't build a damn thing within that 20-foot thing. And I say, these carports are not an obstruction to the view. If you look at my hand here, the arm, you can see perfectly what's in back of my arm. And that's what these carports are going to amount to. Two poles about eight foot apart, apart. And that's it. The, my major obstruction to the view is going to be the cars themselves, which are, will always be there. We are not, the, the parking will not change. So the carports are not going to alter the view shed and the, the ability of people to see beyond, around those parking spaces. And, let's see, what else is... So, and the city has complained that we're not comporting with the existing design. And I say, what existing design? I mean, there's, there's at least five or six different things going on in this carport. And the carports, again, are designed to be, to, to just virtually disappear. And we want to keep all the carports the same. And Joe, you can, the city suggested, and I had actually considered this, the city suggested that we do use the gable roof style, though no, the other drawing, though, yes. And I apologize, my scanner was not working, so that's something taken with my cellphone. And you can see for a single carport, that's great. But when we get to a two-carport structure or a four-carport structure, it's not great. It looks really stupid. And it, and not only that, it dominates, it present, it produces this architectural feature which we don't want. We don't want an architectural feature with there. We want to see nothing. And so that's, that's what our plans are. And so, in conclusion, the carports are on the periphery. They, we urge you to support this because it is for the benefit of the people who live there, not for us. And that's all I have to say. How'd I do time-wise?
You did great.
Yeah?
Yeah, thank you very much. And we'll give you a chance to come back up and...
Well, if you have questions, please. And I think that the, the structure questions are best referred to my husband, who is the architect.
Okay, absolutely. Thank you very much.
Hi, my name's Joanne McGarry. It's nice to meet somebody who li, who owns property down the street from where I live. And I pass by that place all the time, and it's wonderful. And that car is wonderful. And that car is wonderful that I see passing by. It really is a beautiful location, and if I didn't already have a nice place to live, I'd be knocking on your door to see if I could move in there. When we have discussed new construction, such as the Valley West apartment complex that's on the bottom of the horseshoe design, there was some parking designed in that apartment complex, and it had a little courtyard as well, in the look, is my recollection. And one of the things I brought up at that point in time was with the car slots for the different apartments, would there be roofing over the parking spaces in that new construction so that the potential for solar could be there? You know, if not installed at the moment of the construction of the building, at least it would be an easily adaptable addition. And I think, thinking about our current reality of the future and our energy sources and such, I'm wondering if consideration has been made to thinking about designing those things that could be adapted to have solar panels on them at a later date, if not at the time of construction, making it an even more important addition to the place, you know, for adapting, for uses, you know, using solar energy instead of other forms of energy. So I guess my question is, would that be something that would be considered, and that there probably are incentives for people who would want to add solar, especially to a space like that with multi-units? And I think it's, you know, really nice that a lot of view sheds or whatever are being considered in designs, but one of the things that I would really love to see is the ability to add solar panels on to those if that could happen. So I look forward to seeing what happens with that space and your cars getting protected, hopefully. And we need to really start thinking beyond just the now, and we've got to be thinking about the future and how we can adapt. And I think, you know, adapting rooftops of a carport to solar is a good idea. Thank you.
Thanks for those comments, Joanne. Anybody else like to speak here in the audience? Fred?
Yes, thank you. It's clear the applicant has been substantially improving the property, and we can all appreciate what's been done there. Among the questions that come up are, how often is it that a waiver for a 10-foot setback for a parking carport is granted in Arcata, and where are some other examples of this? As we are all aware, L Street is designated to become a linear park. This block of the L Street linear park will likely be a five mile per hour vunurf, that is a paved area that has vehicles, pedestrians, and cyclists coexisting. Can we pull up the overall site plan? Vunurs can be designed in a variety of ways, but typically, there's no curb or sidewalk. The whole width of the vunurf is essentially one sidewalk, so there's no curb for anyone to trip on. For this particular block, it's likely that there would be the curb and sidewalk on this side because of this parking here. But the, this is, we don't know yet, okay? It might be a curb, might be a curb and a sidewalk. The stairway on the building in the middle there, the five plex, is right on the property line, right on L Street. Currently, there's a sidewalk that separates the stairway from the bike paths. That could change when the linear park and vunurf are designed. The parking structures are open on all sides, but they are still structures. There's still a little more mass, and that's something that I imagine you're considering. The, as a possibility, there could be, Joe, do you have the map with the 10-foot setbacks around? Different, this is a possibility that I'm suggesting, different criteria could be used on the different structures. The one at the bottom there, that's 10 feet, extends 10 feet into the side, let that pass. The one on 10th Street, let that one pass. The one on the corner, I find problematic. And then, on the one that's, the vertical one, that may or may not have the PG&E gas line under it, if that could be 10 feet back from the street, I think it would be a better solution, but they'd be giving up a covered parking space. The corner one, I think distinctly impacts the visuals of the linear park, and I don't know whether that's a consideration for you or not. Overall, as it was presented by Senior Planner Mattier, it seems impossible to, for you to approve this, but I would like to see at least, you know, three-fifths of it or four-fifths of it approved. Thanks.
Thanks, Fred. Commenters online, David?
I don't see any, no.
My name is Bill Browning. I'm the owner of the car that has been mentioned. I've lived at the location there in my apartment since 2015, and the unit I live in is the, I guess it's the number two parking space there that is referred to. And that was, gave me a private off-street parking for me, which is adjoining my apartment. This is a great convenience, especially for an 80-year-old with mobility issues. And the addition of the carport covering will provide protection for my car, which is a classic '56 car. And currently, this car is being stored at great expense during the winter months merely to keeping it safe from the elements. The carport would no longer make this necessary for me. We all know how brutal the effects of the weather can have on our vehicles, so I'm sure that the other residents will appreciate this new amenity. And I'm sure Katie and Fred Morehouse have designed an attractive and well-thought-out structure. Thanks.
Thank you for your comments.
Hello, everyone. I am Julie de Saed Elcock, and I'm the property manager for this complex. The Morehouses are doing this for the benefit of their tenants. Many of their tenants have been living in the unit for, like she said, 10, 15, 20, 136 years they've been there. This is their home, and many, if not all of our tenants, their vehicle is their biggest investment. So they want this. I believe this project will enhance, not detract, from the historic Lord House. This project will pull together the entire complex and make it more harmonious and organized. And obviously, this is opinion-based, and that's my opinion, but it's also the opinion of 99% of our tenants who call this complex their home. You may have received these letters of support. I made copies for everybody. But we have letters from five tenants, including Bill's. One of our oldest tenant, who is 80, one is from our youngest tenant, who is 15 months. So that represents the whole spectrum of people. Finally, I believe that the way the owners designed the carports, they're simple and they're not heavy, and they're not anywhere near as heavy as they look in that picture, in my opinion, will make the Lord House stand out even more and make it the star of the show, as it should be. So I'm asking you to approve the design review and minor use permit as presented by the owners. Thank you.
Thanks for your comments, Julie. Just want to make sure there aren't any other commenters in the audience that would like to weigh in on this project, and no commenters online. Okay. Given that, I would like to close public comment and invite deliberations among commissioners.
Did you want to offer the last rebuttal? I don't know if there's anything to rebut, but...
Well, do we want to do that after...
Typically, it's done at the end of public comment, before you close for deliberations?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, if...
Frank has something to add about the lighting.
Please.
There's a specific question about the lighting.
There is going to be lighting. It would be the LEDs underneath. And they, so we had the security in the carports. I mean, it's not totally dark out there, but it does get dark.
It'll be motion sensitive.
Yeah, then they'll be motion sensitive. But those are details that will be included in the project and the drawings as we continue with them, to clarify things like that. Now, if there are any other questions about the drawings as they are, or I can answer, because I did the drawings, I'd love to answer them.
Go ahead.
I just had a quick question. Are the parking spaces assigned to the units specifically?
Yes, but not really, okay? I said, I, we went, I came and assigned a long time ago and gave the parking spaces numbers, okay? And then, the units on the site correspond, still correspond to those. And, yeah.
That's my, yeah, thank you.
Go ahead, Peter.
I just have a question for the owners. How do you feel about the idea of putting solar modules on the roof?
I can answer that.
Yeah, go ahead.
I have no idea how it would, who would benefit from it. Would it be me? Because my, our utility bill for the complex isn't so extraordinary. I mean, it's just, it's like charging stations. How does that work out? What are the mechanics of it? I'm not opposed to solar, although we certainly hadn't considered it as part of this project. But it's like, okay, does the tenant benefit? Do I benefit? I mean, how does this work? See, those are, to me, all questions that I really have no answer for.
It would have to be assigned to a particular PG&E account, but to tell you who, so...
My head is starting to explode.
Either your account or someone else's, but the planet, the planet would benefit.
Yes, yes, and I'm sort of considering, I agree, except I'm sort of considering the maintenance headaches involved with it. I mean, there's, it's just a complexity that I hadn't planned on addressing at this time. The same was with installing charging stations in the, in the, in the carports. We are bringing electricity, so we will have the option of putting in charging stations if we're still alive when that happens. And I don't know if we will be. I mean, it's like, who pays for it? How does it work? Is it metered? You know, it's just, there's a lot of things I don't understand about it.
Okay.
Does that make sense to you? I mean, it's like, maybe.
Yeah. I think we understand.
I'm not opposed to it, yeah.
Understand your position, thank you. Judith, questions?
I don't have a question, but if we're deliberating, I'd be willing to speak.
Okay. I think we're done with questions and ready to deliberate, so why don't we start with you, then?
I really appreciate the excellent presentations by everyone who made them, the staff report. I appreciate all the work that the Morehouses have done on this property. I especially appreciate, however, the recommendations of city staff. And I would urge the planning commission to just say no. Just say no. The setbacks and vision clearance areas are in our code for public safety. In particular, they protect little people. They protect the seven little people who can be invisible from an SUV moving in and out of a parking space in the blind spot. Even with those videos, you don't see them. That's who those visual clearance spaces are meant to protect. They protect people like me, people who are under 5'2", who can't see over the large SUVs. And I believe that the city probably would not have approved parking in those areas where they did approve it in 2012 if they had thought about the humongous SUVs that we have dominating our car world today. The cars are now parked there. The city engineer has said emphatically that additional structures should not be built, and I agree with that. We have city standards in place of two types that say that this project should not be approved, and I agree with those. I also think that it would be a terrible precedent to start approving parking in those visual protection areas because somehow we're grandfathering in parking that shouldn't have been approved there in the first place a decade ago. We've had one project involving a historic structure where we did insist that that visual clearance area be protected, and where the owners made that happen. It's not as though we're putting in housing that's going to house people in those places. We're putting in, we're proposing to put in, an amenity for cars, which are already there. It makes a lot of sense to me to put a carport over a handicap parking space and a loading zone, if it can be designed so that it stays out of the setback area and the visual clearance area. That makes a lot of sense. It would make a lot of sense to make some leeway for carports if we were in Wisconsin, where I used to live, where we'd get six feet of snow. Or in someplace where it is physically dangerous to go in and out of an uncovered car. That's not the case here. And so, I would urge you to honor the recommendations of our city staff and deny this project. I think the only finding that we can, that we should make in denial is that the project does not comply with longstanding public safety standards. We don't have to make any of those other findings for denial. In fact, they're actually framed as findings for approval and then flipped, okay? That's typically not how the city presents things, anyway. And if the owners would like to redesign the parking so that we're not going to have structures in the visual clearance area or in the setback, great, your tenants can have their carports. But we have public safety laws that recommend, that require that they not be in those locations. And so, I recommend that we follow staff's recommendations and deny this project.
Thank you, Judith. Other commissioners, comments, weigh in on this? Peter?
Yeah, I, I think that, given the caveat of the PG&E gas line, that, and given that carport number four be brought away from L Street, maybe one less car, that those two are acceptable to me. I don't think they, I think they do provide a service to the tenants, and I think that would be fine. I don't think they interfere with the architecture or would interfere with the park, and I think that would be okay, again, with... that would be okay, again, with the caveat of the PG&E gas line. But I am not in favor of one, two, and three.
Thank you. Anybody else thoughts, comments? Go ahead, Matt.
Yeah, I would just echo what Judith said. I don't want to expand the nonconforming parking that, you know, our city engineer says is a safety hazard.
Abby?
Yeah, when I look at the plans, I don't see a project that needs to be denied. I see a project that needs to be modified. I understand the need for this specimen car to be protected from the elements, but just around the corner from that parking spot specifically is another one that we could, if we, I guess, approved just the carport over that one parking space in carport number one, could host this fine specimen of a car. So I think that with a revised project and fewer carports, especially the ones that have vision clearance areas, that maybe, you know, assuming the applicant's even interested in a project that looks like that, that this project could be approved. It would definitely have to look differently.
Thank you. Joel?
I love that Hudson. I walk by it once or twice a day. I am not troubled as much by the, I don't think I'm troubled at all by the setback issue. As to the vision clearance, I tend to agree with the project sponsor that I'm not sure how a post materially impacts vision, while it may be a technical violation. And as much as I generally like to support the city staff's position on things if I can, on that one, I don't think I can. I tend to think that that is not a major concern that I have. On the other hand, since, if we were to approve part or all of this, we would be effectively encouraging the ownership and use of passenger vehicles, and I like to see the city move to, you know, public transit, bicycles, and not rely on cars. So I'd like to see, you know, something that the project sponsor could give to help our climate crisis if we are going to allow the carports such as either installation of solar or an electric vehicle charging station as a condition of approval of one or more of the carports.
Thank you. I appreciate everyone's input there. I appreciate the letters from residents and the perspective that people that live there feel they would benefit from the carports. I think that's fairly obvious. I share Judith's concerns, and there's issues with street setbacks, sidewalk setbacks, the vision clearance issues. City engineer has raised issues I'm concerned about, and I'm also concerned about PG&E. So I'm aligned with Judith in not supporting this project. So does anyone want to make a motion, one way or another, given the discussion we've had about this project?
Let me just comment here. It seems like the carports four and five, especially if that were reduced by one car from the west, if number four were reduced one car from the west, don't have vision issues and don't really interfere with the architecture and would provide some protection for some cars. So that's why I suggested that those might be acceptable. I agree with what has been said about the ones on one, two, and three.
Go ahead.
I have a question for staff. Technically, if the applicant, or say we were to continue the project tonight, and the applicant removes all of the proposed carports that require the vision clearance waiver and are within the setback, so could they proceed with just the carports that don't require this waiver without any discretionary review from us, or the design review still requires?
Each of the carports requires a design review because they're within setback areas. And the recommendation of the city engineer to stay outside of vision clearance triangles could result in a condition of approval that effectively modifies the approval that the planning commission makes. So that is one way that you could achieve, I think, Commissioner Strickland, what you had proposed earlier to make an approval now that modifies the project through those conditions. And I've heard Commissioner Lehman say that as well. Can I use the mouse real quick? So the carports that could achieve that are the one in the southeast corner and the ones in the back parking lot, with the exception of the portion that covers this here. So that is one way to go about it, to, you know, approve with conditions if the commission felt like they could do that. The other way that you could do it is to continue the hearing and ask them to come back with a redesign that addresses some of the concerns that you raised.
Thank you.
Judith?
Yeah, staff has often told us that it's not our business to redesign projects that have been proposed to the planning commission, especially for design review. I'd certainly be willing to consider continuing the project if the project proponents are interested in presenting a project that does not include parking in the setback areas or in the vision clearance areas. They would probably lose a few parking spaces on that site. Getting parking out of those areas would actually be a public benefit. And so if we were to continue this item and ask the project proponents to redesign the project and bring one that actually conforms to our city's standards, it might not even have to come back to us. It could actually be approved by staff.
Yeah, if I could just clarify, all of the carports are in a setback, and so they require some form of decision through a minor use permit design review. And I certainly do discourage the planning commission from trying to design a project from the dais, but it's well within your purview and certainly, you know, encouraged that if there is one particular element of the design that you don't feel like you can make the exception for, the vision clearance triangle, for example, you could just say, we approved the project, but none of the structures can be within the vision clearance triangle. That'll trigger a redesign that excludes structures within the vision clearance triangle, and that could then be approved administratively based on your guidance. The city staff had real concerns about the design element components, and what I'm hearing is that there's not so much concern at the commission level. And so you wouldn't necessarily have to be redesigning that. You would see exactly what's drawn here, the slope of the roof pitch, the design, the materials. All of those would be exactly as drawn here, and what you wouldn't see is structures within those vision clearance triangles if you approved it that way. So those are both options, either asking them to come back with a redesign, you give them some information about what you'd want them to redesign or approve with conditions of approval. But either way, they'd still require, you know, a hearing of some type.
Go ahead, Peter.
Just a comment on what you just said, David. I did find carports one and two to be architecturally not in keeping with the whole project and very crowded and not very good looking, and that's why I objected to, in part why I objected to them.
Joel?
I agree with Peter. I did not like one and two, and I found it hard to envision the other ones, and I would like, if this were ever to come back to us, to be able to see more clearly what these things actually are going to look like.
My concerns include the staff concerns about vision clearance setbacks, but also the aesthetic components of this. So for me, it's just, I'm just struggling with the really totality of the project. If we deny the project this evening, there is still, it doesn't foreclose the opportunity for the project being redesigned and resubmitted nonetheless.
Yeah, there are some limitations on bringing back a denied project, time limitations. You know, I suspect if you just failed to move it forward, then that would, you know, be an indication to them, you know, to redesign and come back. Or if you continued and directed them, you know, come back with something else for us, that's another option for you as well. But if you formally deny the project, there's, I think it's a six-month, is it six months? I think it's a six-month waiting period before they can come back and propose that same project again.
Okay, Joel?
Can I make a motion to continue this for, I don't know, 30 days or a month?
Yeah, do we have to include a time certain for a continuance?
I would suggest we pick a date certain so that the noticing is preserved for that. And I would also, if you want to continue, I would give real specific instructions to the applicant on what you'd like to see at that continued hearing in terms of, you know...
Well, I'm a little concerned. I'm hearing what I think is a hard no from Judith. I'm hearing a hard no from Matt. I'm a hard no, and it sounded like you were concerned about, conceptually, the investment in setting a precedent and creating more structures for cars. So I'm not sure what would be done in the continuance, as far as you're thinking.
I think I could support structures on four and five myself.
Yeah, I could too. But I'll say that if we do, and with the caveat that they can't be over the gas line and they can't encroach on the...
Vision clearance?
Yeah, not the vision clearance, the...
The setback.
Setback requirement. That doesn't leave a lot of carport. It would be a few spaces. It would be three or six spaces, something like that.
Yeah, so I personally wonder if the applicant wants more time and is interested in coming back with a proposal like this, or if they're not interested, because, and not to waste any of our times, if they aren't as interested in modifying the project as we're discussing and may have additional requests, then a denial may be the only path forward. So I don't know if it's ripe to ask them if they would like more time to come back with a project that's modified. But I personally wouldn't feel comfortable approving the project with all of these conditions and questions like the gas line.
Yeah, it would seem that continuance would, in some ways, be predicated on a willingness to redesign.
You want a response?
Sure. Are you willing, if we give you time, to redesign?
No.
Okay.
And for Ms. Ayer?
I'm sorry, can you?
Just go to the lectern if you, please, so we...
Oh, so they can hear it online?
Yeah, exactly. Thank you.
One parking space per unit. If I had any other place to put those parking spaces, they would have gone there. There was no space. So that's why the parking spaces are as they are, because the whole building removal and renovation of the facade would not have happened without the parking spaces designed as they were. So that's it. We are unwilling to abide by the setback requirements. We are unwilling to not put carports where the engineer thinks there shouldn't be carports. The only place that we are willing to not build a carport is over the PG&E gas line because that's not safe. And that's it. So we will withdraw.
Okay.
And we won't waste any more of your time. Thank you very much for the time you've taken.
I appreciate the clarity.
I'd like to make the motion for denial of the project.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Motion fails.
Actually, it should have been calling for a vote, and then we don't have approval for the project. I think I made that motion...
Did we get there procedurally?
I'm sorry, what was the question?
I think I might have made that motion incorrectly. Is that correct?
I couldn't hear you, Judith. I'm sorry.
I think you...
If I was moving for denial and then we have... What was the vote?
You moved for deny. What I heard was...
I think it was unanimous.
It was unanimous. You voted to deny, and we all agreed with you. So I think that's clear from staff perspective.
Okay.
Thank you very much. Moving on to item six on our agenda this evening is business items. We have two business items tonight, and we will start with business item A, which is to consider a recommendation to the city council on the general plan updates. There's a lot in here. Looking at the time, which is about 7:12 or so now, maybe we'll start with a staff report. You can kind of talk us through the items, and maybe we can discuss where we want to prioritize, and if there's anything specific the commissioners want to discuss in this section.
Yeah, sure. Just super brief summary of the topics and a recommendation to start with inclusionary zoning because it is certainly a tangible bit I think you can get through. So inclusionary zoning is one topic. This came up at the city council planning commission joint study session for the commission to do some work on this. Another topic is to consider the community benefits program. Oh, sorry, yeah. Another topic is to cover the community benefits program, and there was some work done on that at the last planning commission meeting, and so we would be continuing that work, doing a little bit of a review for those of you who weren't here. There are some wrap-up items from environmental services that they wanted to add in on the resource conservation element, and so we have been carrying those forward for the last couple. And then, of course, you know, anything else that is of interest to you. So my recommendation would be to start with inclusionary zoning. I think you can probably wrap that up tonight.
And then move on from there. Is everyone okay with following that path? Start with inclusionary zoning and see where we get?
Could I ask a few questions before...
Of course.
...start out with that? I also read the agenda of the city council for their meeting tomorrow, and because this is coming up in the context of the general plan gateway nexus, I feel that it's appropriate to bring this up on our agenda right now. It is on the agenda. I was frankly quite distressed to read David's recommendation that... I was frankly quite distressed to read David's recommendation that the gateway plans' conditions be folded into the general plan, eliminating the gateway area plan as a separate element. This could be done and retain many of the recommendations that we've already made, but frankly, it's a slap in the face to the planning commission and the public who have already put in such effort to create the area plan as an entity unique to the gateway area. What folding these items into the general plan and eliminating the gateway area plan as a separate element would do is that it would allow all five council members to vote on it, in effect, to vote on those policies. Despite the conflicts of interest that the fair political practices commission staff have already identified, which is the reason that two of the members of the city council have recused themselves from the gateway. Now, this is on our agenda. I'm a little bit confused as to why specific individual policies relative to the gateway and the general plan would be on our agenda and this way broader issue would be on the city council's agenda without any input from us on that consideration. And I think it would be appropriate for us to discuss that in this item and provide some input to the city council as the planning commission, which is charged with advising the city council on matters related to the general plan. They do give us direction. Our job is to give them advice. And I'd like to have an opportunity to do that.
I'm okay. I, I recognize that this is a big issue. I, if the commission would like to discuss that issue, I'm okay with it, but I don't see that, I don't see that discussion being driving towards a recommendation to the city council as they haven't even had a chance to discuss it yet. If they do discuss it, when they do discuss it, if they decide it's something that they want to entertain, obviously, we will look at it with an eye to making a recommendation one way or another. If commissioners are, share the concern that Judith is bringing up and would like to discuss the issue, I think we can give it some time, but I don't, I, I don't see that discussion leading towards a recommendation, given that the city council hasn't discussed it yet. So maybe like to hear from other commissioners about whether they want to pick that issue up now or wait until the city council weighs in on it.
I'd like to wait and I'd like to talk about inclusionary zoning.
Yeah, I'm not saying we shouldn't talk about inclusionary zoning, but we have an elephant in our room right now.
Yeah.
And I can't make it disappear.
I, I hear you, Judith. Joel, how are you? Want to cover this topic? We could spend 15 minutes, just 15, 30 minutes at the most.
Yeah, if we can set a time limit on it.
Yeah.
And see where we get.
I'm happy to spend time on it. I'm not prepared, I wasn't prepared to discuss that tonight, so I'm not sure that I'll have much to add, but I'm happy to hear others' thoughts.
I'm fine with discussing it, but I share your suggestion that we don't make a recommendation tonight.
Okay. Then let's, let's give it until 7:45, which gives us almost 25 minutes to kind of just talk through the basic issues here. I understand what your concerns are completely. I think that this is a topic that came up organically from some of the other city council members at our last joint study session. The way that felt to me, the way it sounded to me, the way I took it, and then the way I heard it in follow-up discussions with those city council members was, why are we not thinking about incorporating some of the components that we're working on that makes so much sense in the gateway area and applying them more broadly in, across the city in general? I, I don't find that general concept personally upsetting. I don't think it takes away from any of the work that we've done here. I think there would be, clearly the form-based code is something that's going to be specific to the gateway area. And I don't know if you, David, want to talk about this issue in a little more detail as far as like, is there a sense of how it would roll out if the city council does go that far? Or is that really too, too early to think about what that would look like because it may help sort of fill in the question marks for some of the commissioners that are...
Yeah, so I guess, you know, first question is, you know, is sort of a point of order. The inclusionary zoning topic, I don't think is going to take any less than a half an hour. So I just wanted to let you know that. And then in terms of, you know, the recommendation, I mean, I think I've heard several things that, you know, you know, have been said tonight. I've heard several people say things or write things to us that indicates to me that there's, you know, a lot of misunderstanding about what, what the city council is doing. And so I think I'd be, you know, happy to talk a little bit about how, you know, the components might fit together. I am a little leery of getting ahead of the city council's discussion and finding out where they land in terms of, you know, putting too much information out there about what the outcomes of their discussion would be without knowing what their, their decision is going to be. So, so I'm, I'm leery of providing too much information there.
I get that, but maybe a super high level hypothetical, if the city council who brought this idea up decided they wanted to, in some sense, expand the impact of the work that's been done around the gateway area, what might a possible pathway look like?
Sure. The, so the, as you described, the city council, in particular, council member Atkins Salazar requested the last study session that we evaluate porting these policies into the general plan at large that are currently in the gateway area plan. It's been discussed by many different people. It's come up in your conversations, it's come up in the joint study sessions. Different public members have mentioned it as well as a concept. And, you know, this is, you know, even dating back to the very beginning, there were questions about why, you know, all of this great policy is only in this one specific area. The, so the city council on Wednesday, tomorrow night, will be, you know, taking that question up. And, you know, I want to, you know, I'm happy to take the heat for what's in the staff report. Certainly, I wrote the majority of it. But this was a council direction to put this on the agenda so that they could have a conversation about these options. Certainly, the staff report says to, you know, keep the gateway area plan as it is, as it currently stands, or subsume those policies into the rest of the general plan. Certainly, the council could, in their, you know, prerogative, could direct some other mid-ground, but we provided the option for, you know, either or situation. In the staff report, we show a recommendation for where those policies would fall into the general plan. From the gateway area plan, most of them will fall in, you know, there's a lot of context around circulation, there's a lot of open space in there. And then all of the policy that is, you know, around the community benefits program or design, there's a whole design chapter in the gateway element, would go into, as we're proposing it, the design element. And that would allow for other infill opportunity zones or other areas where we would, you know, look to do form-based codes to take advantage of those policies as well. Now, I want to be real clear that, you know, this, this claim or this idea that the, you know, having a policy that says if you go above four stories, you provide community benefits, means that all across the city, you're going to have the ability to go above four stories. That's not what's intended. That's not what's in the staff report. And I think that's a misread on what that policy would do. If the policy is put into a design element that says if you have a building taller than four stories, it's going to partake of community benefits and it's connected with that community benefits program, that would only be in areas where such a community benefits program is established by the zoning ordinance. So the work that we've done on the gateway zoning code, if they eliminate the gateway area plan as a standalone document, would be ported into the, the general plan, the form-based code that we've done and the community benefits program that we've worked on for that area would remain intact through that code. Is kind of how we're, we're seeing this. Now, if the council says, look, we want to port some of these, but not all of them, we want to retain a gateway area plan, but we want it to be streamlined, we want it to only focus on a policy that is real specific to that area, because we've indicated there are several policies that are very specific to the area. You know, that's, that's another alternative as well. So I just, I don't, it's hard for me to say what the, you know, what the outcomes would be other than the polls. On the one end, if you keep the gateway plan, then you have exactly what we've been doing. Gateway area plan as an element, gateway code implementing that, that element. On the opposite end, port everything into the general plan and then you would rely on codes to, to implement the various components of that, only in the areas where those codes have been adopted. The majority of the land use type of policies that are in the gateway plan that would be moving into other elements of the general plan, if, if the council decides to do this, are falling under the commercial mixed-use land use designation. So they wouldn't be applicable to residential low density, they wouldn't be applicable to agriculture, they wouldn't be applicable to any other zoning besides commercial mixed use. And yeah, there are some changes that would have to happen in there, some rectification. Right now, the gateway area plan has no upper density limit and instead it's relying on other standards to limit development. Instead of having several standards that overlap and conflict and create, you know, more complexity for designers to be able to, to design product to bring to market, it relies on a few number of those. In the commercial mixed use, there's still a density limit, there's still, you know, floor-to-air ratio, there's still a whole lot of other things that we'd have to go through a process and say, well, do we include the gateway concept into the commercial mixed use? Or do we retain commercial mixed use and have a carve-out except in the gateway area plan? So there's a lot that needs to be resolved if the council provides direction to, to take this action, that I really can't, you know, guess at where it's going to land, but that's sort of the high level.
Got it. And just, just to be clear then, the, the form-based code, the gateway code would stay specific to articulating results in the gateway area? And if there were other areas that would also be impacted by the same general mixed-use land designations, they would perhaps, whatever other areas of town you may choose to identify, whether it's Valley West or Sunny Brae, they would also have to have their own specific code that would articulate what, what would, what would the governing sort of concepts around infill be in those specific areas? So I guess what I'm trying to say is, even if the commercial mixed-use was applied broadly, there would still be specific codes that would dictate the nature of development in specific neighborhoods of Arcata. Am I getting that right?
Yeah, more or less, with the one caveat that there are already standards that apply to commercial mixed use that are currently in the code. We've talked about many of the factors of that that need to change to make it more effective, and I won't go over those now, but I will say that, you know, there's going to have to be some, some rectifying once we make that decision. Anything that doesn't have a, you know, code that is specific to it, à la the gateway area plan or one of the other infill area zones, if they have a, a form-based code that's associated with them, would go back to the underlying commercial mixed-use standards.
Got it. I think, Judith, I'll, I'll give you the mic in one second. I think the reason why, this just clarifies for me, the reason why I don't want us to drive to a recommendation is because there's way more questions than answers as far as how this would unfold. I did want to speak briefly to your observation that it would change the recusal issue. I wasn't sure by your comments if, if you were in favor of that or not. It would seem to me though, that the more of our city council we can get engaged in the process, the more of a democratic representation we get out of the process. So, yeah, please.
Yeah, I would like to clarify that. The, the reason that two members of the five-member city council were recused from the gateway was because of material conflicts of interest. They own property that would be affected. They would still own the same property that would be affected by those zoning standards relative to those locations. They would just not have to recuse themselves from the entire general plan. I actually feel that in this discussion tomorrow at the city council, because it will be discussing basically the life or death of the gateway area plan, that two members of the city council should not even have a say or a vote on those. And I'm, I'm not sure what the fair political practices people would say about that or what the city attorney would say about it. My understanding is, you know, probably city staff has reviewed that. But in effect, a decision to go with the dissolution of the gateway area plan is basically two members of the city council vote themselves in on those policies, where they have now been prevented from engaging in a conflict of interest at the city of Arcata's expense. It's a trick, it's a tricky area. I'm, I'm sure, once a decision is made to go with a broader kind of zoning, that, then they're, then they're in. Okay, but...
I think our discussions should center on if anyone has comments about how it would work. I mean, I think, I think the recusal piece is a little bit of a sidebar. It's out of our hands.
I, I think that is our elephant in the room. I think we have two city council members who would like to be part of a process that they're now excluded from. Those are the two who David Loyah explained had identified themselves. He also mentioned that I had suggested that some of our great gateway policies apply citywide. I have. Those refer to the things that we're about to discuss and things to facilitate bicycle and active transportation and may, maybe some others. The city of San Francisco has taken exactly the kind of approach that you're suggesting. If you look at their zoning code, they actually have different zoning categories for each of their major neighborhoods. South of Market has its own zoning categories. Chinatown has its own zoning categories and so on. It has, I think, a few hundred zoning categories. It's a simple way out. Our code may end up with those or it may end up with overlays if that's the way we do it. There are a lot of different ways of doing it. But the planning process that we've engaged in for two years now with intense community engagement, with conflict that probably could have been avoided if we'd started out this way from the beginning, would really be undervalued. And so that's why I wanted to bring it up. I don't, I'm not suggesting we make a single commission recommendation, but city council members do watch these meetings and if we have a little bit of that discussion today, they'll go into their discussion, knowing we have concerns.
I get that. I, I, I still think that the recusal issue is a sidebar. I think it's more broadly, and the question, all this great work is being done, all of these policies are being put together that are going to, you know, take the city of Arcata into a better place, and why are... into a better place, and why are we restricting it to this one area? Can we not think about incorporating this more broadly? And so that's how I see and hear this. We're about 10 minutes from the amount of time we gave ourselves, so I'd like to just hear if any other commissioners want to weigh in or have thoughts about this. If not, that's fine, but if so, now's your chance. Go ahead, Matt.
Just a thought, which is that one of the complaints that we've heard a number of times from people who live within the gateway area, is that it applies just to them. And so the idea of putting policies in the general plan, and having it apply to more places of Arcata, feels equitable and fair to me, in a way that I appreciate.
That's a good point. Joel, Peter? Nothing to add? Okay, I mean...
Let me just make...
Go ahead, Judith.
I think the way we've seen the gateway, and the types of neighborhood-specific planning we're doing, has always been portrayed as a kind of incremental thing. We're trying it out in the gateway, and the things that we'll learn work can be implemented according to other neighborhoods' own unique characteristics in the future. A general plan and its elements can be amended. They're living documents, and I don't think anyone ever portrayed the gateway as the be-all, end-all, or that we could simply project it onto the rest of the city. Anyway, thank you for this discussion. I...
I appreciate your points. You bring up points that have been on a lot of people's minds. Again, this is something that the city council has decided they want to discuss, we'll all be paying close attention, and when we have a better sense of what direction it is or isn't going, then we'll certainly have a better direction of what we need to do to weigh in in the future. So with that, can we get back on track with inclusionary zoning?
Yes. And, you know, 7:37 at night is a great time to do a bunch of number crunching, so I've got a bunch of tables with a bunch of numbers for you. And I'm going to walk through each of these and ask if there are any questions after each one, because some of these tables are dense. For the most part, they're the tables that are already in your staff report, so you should have had time to study them. So the council said a couple of things about inclusionary zoning, over the course of the various study sessions that we've had. But one of the things that they said at the last study session is that they wanted to see a, you know, workforce inclusionary zoning that could be added or considered for... Sorry about that. That could be considered for increasing the impact of inclusionary zoning. I did a lot of different models and methods, and in your last staff report, you saw some numbers that were crunched for basically moderate income. We were kind of starting at a moderate income program, and in that staff report, I basically said, you know, this doesn't really work. The moderate-income folks are earning enough money to pay market rate, and if we do a, use a similar metric for creating a rent restriction for moderate income, that rent restriction would be so much higher than existing market rate, that it just, it doesn't track, it doesn't work. So after we worked through that, we started working on a median-income inclusionary zoning program, which, you know, would be considered kind of workforce housing. And this still is kind of, you know, just to be perfectly honest, marginally effective. Folks that are earning median income are earning also, you know, enough to pay for market-rate housing, typically, given by household size. Now, I'm not saying this is true of every household, there are households out there that are struggling, that are earning median income, but just running the numbers, someone who's earning median income should be able to afford market-rate rental housing. But median income, that category covers everything from 80.1%, 80% is a threshold for low income, so everything above 80% area median income, all the way up to median income. And so folks who are on the lower end of, in that median income category, you know, would potentially benefit from a program that had some rent restrictions. I played with several different models that were based on the same HCD models that I presented in your last staff report, and ultimately, I landed on, this is a recommendation, it's 30% of 75% of area median income, and then you subtract off a utility allowance. This is the exact same type of method that's used to develop the rent restrictions for low-income housing and very low-income housing. The 30% component comes from sort of this idea that you should be paying about 30% of your income towards housing cost. The 75% of area median income category, or variable, comes from the idea that you are scaling down into the lower limits of that income category to set your rent values. And then the utility allowance component comes from the idea that, in addition to the 30% going towards your rent, you've also got other household costs that are baked into your living costs. And generally speaking, you want to see those in the range of 30% to 37% for your full housing cost, to be considered affordable. I have to admit, a little bit of this, too, was a bit of reverse engineering. You don't get to a median income rent limitation until you get to this 30% of 75% of very median income, and start to hit where market rents are. And so I kind of structured it so that it was at least around market rent, and I'll show you that in just a minute here. Okay, so here's table four, out of your staff report, and what I wanted to draw your attention to is the proposed workforce housing rent limits that we're suggesting here. Now, these are scaled by household size, and this is related to the house size, so zero bedroom for a one person would be limited at $980, and so on and so forth. Two-bedroom for, or one-bedroom for a two-person household at $1,00137, three-person household, two-bedroom, $1,294. I've also got on here for, you know, comparison, low home rent, these are rent limitations for folks earning 50% or less area median income, if we do a rent restriction, and high home rent, which is generally for folks earning 80% area median income or less. And so you can see the comparison, for example, on a studio bedroom, $722 for a low home rent, restriction $812 for a high home rent, and workforce housing limit would be $980. These rent limitations are based on the county's median rents, is the way that HCD calculates them. So the county would tell us that fair market rent county-wide is $812. In Arcata, we think it's higher. This is based on a sample of some rentals that are on the market right now. We think that in Arcata, you're at around $975. So other parts of the county are, you know, pulling that median rent down. In Arcata, you're seeing it pull the median rent up. And so you can see that $975 and $980 are pretty close together. In fact, if $975 is the market rent, then a rent limit of $980 doesn't have an immediate impact on reducing the market rent, and we're going to come back to that, but that's an important point. The other thing I wanted to identify here is that it doesn't scale one-for-one. You could see one-bedroom, I'm sorry, zero-bedroom, one-bedroom, and two-bedroom scale pretty closely. Four-bedroom and five-bedroom, mostly because these are houses that we had to use as comparables, not apartments, don't scale quite the same in terms of the market rents. And so we'll come back to that concept in just a moment here. Tracking with me so far, 30%, 75% area median income creates a rent limitation that's on this bolded bottom line.
Does that include the utility costs?
This includes $120 utility allowance. Thanks for the question. $120 is a pretty typical for, you know, generalized utility allowance for our county.
The low and the high home rent, is that referring to the home federal program, or is that something else?
Yeah, that is referring to rent limitations that are set for, by housing, the state Housing and Community Development Department, and these are for the home program. Several other rent-restricted projects use these same low and high rents, because they already do the method. This fair market rent is also from HCD. Thank you for that question. Okay, so I just wanted to circle back, and this is table five in your staff report, with what we're starting off as a recommendation. There's a lot of flexibility here. And this table five is straight out of your staff report, I want to make one quick correction. We said that your current recommendation is 4% and 6%, it's actually 4% and 9%. This is what your current recommendation is for the amount of inclusionary zoning for very low income and low income respectively. What we're proposing to do is to allow developers, once they trigger the inclusionary zoning requirements, they could choose 4% of very low income, or 9% of low income, based on your current recommendation, and then adding to that this median income or workforce housing inclusionary zoning component at 10%. 10% is just a conversation starter, and when we get to the end of this, you might have some ideas on where to set that. I'm not aware currently of anyone else doing, you know, homemade version of inclusionary zoning, and so this is certainly something we're going to have to run by our legal team before getting too excited about it, but I think this works, and I think we have the authority to implement it. And it actually has, even though it doesn't change the rent, it has some really good ancillary benefits. Okay, now I want to shift real quick, because one of the topics I want to come back to is this 4% and 9%. I want to shift and talk about what the impact of the original staff recommendation for very low and low income percentages for inclusionary zoning, versus where the planning commission landed for very low and low income, and then again, the density bonus triggers for very low and low income. And we talked a little bit about this before, there's the video you watched about the overlap between inclusionary zoning and density bonus, and once there's an overlap there, it has an impact on our community benefits program. I wanted to give you a specific example of a 30-unit project and a 50-unit project, so that you could see what would happen if you implemented 4%, 9%, 3%, 6%, and how that relates to density bonus. This gives you an explicit example, a specific example, of where the overlap happens, and where, just to simplify this, where the colored areas are indicating, is indicating overlap between the two programs. And so you can see, if you have 9% for low income, that's going to result in three units for a 30-unit project. If you have density bonus at 10%, that's also three units. So there's 100% overlap here. Developer is going to choose density bonus and partake of the benefits of density bonus if we tell them you have to produce three units. Similarly, for a 50-unit project, five and five for a low income. Interestingly, with the original recommendation at 6% instead of 9% for low income, that's where you start to get a one-unit differentiation here. The spread between your recommendation on very low starts to happen at a 50-unit project. This is where the numbers roll over, the rounding effect happens, and for 4% at very low, you would be producing two units on a 50-unit project, and three units at 5% on a 50-unit project. So we've talked about this a little bit before, I wanted to show you exactly how it actually works in practice, and why we're suggesting you go with the lower thresholds. Now, this is just one-unit difference, right? What difference is that going to make? This table was not in your staff report. I worked on this afterwards, because it came to me, what is the actual impact of requiring inclusionary zoning? I wanted to understand that a little bit better. So I took those rent tables that I showed you, and I looked at the difference between market rent and the restricted rent on a monthly basis. I multiplied that by 12 months for a year, and I multiplied that by 55 years, the period of time that we typically have for rent restrictions on rent-restricted projects. And so this is effectively the lifecycle cost on a housing project that provides inclusionary zoning for different-sized units, using that difference between restricted rent, market rent, times 12 months, times the 55 years. You can see that the one-unit difference for a two-bedroom apartment, for example, is $110,000. So that's $110,000 that the developer doesn't make over the course of that project, for every two-bedroom inclusionary zoning unit that they provide. You can see with the median income limit, you're basically not having a spread. I mean, that's effectively the same as market rent, as we knew, and because of the lack of comparables for larger units, you see a much larger difference here. I think that for, you know, I'm guessing a little bit here, but I think for apartments, you would have slightly less rents for apartments that were four bedrooms. We don't have many of those to begin with, but you would probably see a much smaller spread for an apartment. This is looking at a housing unit. So that's why that difference is there. So taking that, and looking at like, well, okay, is one unit enough? Go ahead, Commissioner Lehman, I see you have a question.
Yes. David, thanks for doing this. I find this table somewhat misleading. Two reasons. One, 55 years is a long time to project a financial plan. And second, what you're not showing is the fraction of this number from the total income of the project. It's small. So it looks like a big number, but it's a lot of years, and the total for the whole project is gigantic compared to this. Just want to say that.
Okay, I think those are important points, but I beg to differ, this table is not misleading. This table, this table is mathematically accurate, and in terms of projecting out the 55 years, the relationship between low home, high home, and this median income unit, and market rent, those are stable. And so there are going to be adjustments for inflation. This would be looking at a 55-year term in today's dollars. Okay? So that's, I think, relatively stable in this table, actually. But yes, you're right, there are other factors, but...
I apologize for saying misleading.
Oh, that's okay, that's okay. You know, intelligent people can disagree on substantive issues, and I respect that about this commission. The, and it's important to tease these issues out, because this is a small proportion. One or two units is going to be a small proportion of the overall revenue of that project. I didn't have time to prepare for you, and I plan to bring at some point an actual project pro forma, and I think what you'll see is that projects are, you know, make it or break it on very small margins. And so these do have, in fact, impact on whether a project comes to market or not. And that's going to depend on other economic factors, but it could, in today's market, I think, have a significant effect. So I'm going to take this logic one step further, and I'm going to look back at the 30-unit and the 50-unit project that we were looking at before, looking at the difference between 6%, the staff recommendation, and the current planning commission recommendation of 9%. And this, you know, this is obvious, it scales mathematically. The difference between two and three units is $110,000, if we're looking at a two-bedroom here. On the five-unit project, you're looking at $220,000. So, you know, this is just another way of looking at it, maybe it'll make more sense to folks if they look at it this way. But that 30-unit project, $110,000, or the 50-unit project, $220,000, that difference could be the difference between someone deciding to take the density bonus pathway, or our community benefits pathway. And I'd need to do a little bit more to flesh that out, but some of our community benefits, as you recall from last week, are simply project components. Producing affordable housing rapidly, that's a project component, so that doesn't cost the developer anything additional. If it means, you know, giving up additional units versus, you know, having something that doesn't cost them additional, these are all factors that a developer is going to weigh when they're considering this. So I can't say for certain that having a lower inclusionary zoning requirement is going to lead people away from density bonus, but I can tell you that with staff recommendation, there's daylight between density bonus and our program. Commissioner Mayor?
I was going to ask something for those lower figures about a discount rate, but I don't want to get into that after Peter brought up his thing. And it also seems like another big difference is that, you know, by taking the city's option, it is attached to the streamlined approval process, and that that's worth money to a And that's... And that's not counted here. And I think that in terms of tracing what a developer's direction would be, that's something that, you know, you've kept pushing us to accept, and it's something that a developer can probably quantify because they're sitting on credit to speed their project up, but it's, can't be reflected in those figures, so...
That's a really great point, too, and that's not, I can't put a value on that. I will also counter that just slightly, not entirely, but the, you know, with the Housing Accountability Act and, you know, all of the, you know, laws that we've seen that have been implemented that effectively remove our ability to have any discretionary decision-making over housing projects, in particular ones that have some affordable housing, you know, that's the counterbalance to that. So there's a lot of variables in the mix that need to be considered. Commissioner Lehman?
David, I find it hard to believe, I'd be happy to hear what others think, but I find it hard to believe that, given the advantage of a density bonus, the freedom and the speed with which it can be approved, and the waivers and the concessions, I can't believe a developer would choose what we've got going here rather than the density bonus. I mean, if I'm the developer, the density bonus seems like the obvious choice. What do other people think? I think we're kidding ourselves if we think they're going to choose this over a density bonus.
Well, I absolutely guarantee that you will not have a community benefits project if there's overlap between our inclusionary zoning and density bonus. There's absolutely no question. If there's daylight, then there are options on the table. And I think, you know, to Commissioner Mayor's point, that there may be other factors motivating that decision. Those are all got to be, you know, those are all, you know, really good points. I think you should, you know, work through those. So here's what we're recommending as an amendment to your proposal thus far, is to go back to the original 3% and 6% for very low and low income for the inclusionary zoning program. That'll create a little bit of daylight between the inclusionary zoning program and the density bonus program. And then to, you know, set a target for median income that, at this point, even though it doesn't affect most rents, what it does do is prevents gentrification of the building once it's built, because it'll have a rent restriction on it. If we're not successful at creating more housing and the, you know, realities of supply or the theory of supply and demand, as we've been thinking it would work, don't work, and what people actually do is build out apartment buildings and then realize, hey, there's a bigger market, so then they go in and then, you know, put in granite countertops and really upscale those apartment buildings after the fact. If you have a median income program, it'll prevent those units that have that rent restriction from being subject to that, you know, post-development gentrification. So that's one, you know, positive there. So again, staff recommendation, drop from your 4% to 3% for very low income and your 9% to 6% for low income, and then have a conversation about what the right number is here. We've heard people say, well, I want 20% affordable housing, you know, and there are all kinds of questions and concerns about that. But with this median income or workforce housing inclusionary zoning, you could get to the point where you have, you know, 20% rent restricted housing in this inclusionary zoning program with the majority of it targeting workforce housing. And I think that's all I have on that topic.
So the issue before the commission now is to whether or not to take up staff's recommendation for the changes to these associated percentages in order to create some daylight and therefore a chance between inclusionary zoning slash community benefits program and the state density route.
Exactly, yeah. There are two components to this decision. One is, do we create a median income program as I've described it? And associated with that, you know, what is the percent affordability that the planning commission or the percent of units that the commission would recommend? And then the second component is whether to modify the low and very low income numbers to create that daylight or to stick with the original 4 and 9% that the commission had previously recommended.
David, a question. If the developer took the density bonus, would this requirement of 10% median income still apply?
The, it would depend on the way that we wrote the requirements, I believe. I'd have to look into that and get back to you, but I believe we could implement the median income inclusionary zoning requirement even if someone took a density bonus project.
Go ahead, Joel.
And can you remind me, at what, how many units does a project have to be to trigger inclusionary zoning?
We currently have it set at 30 units.
I'm personally attached to the work we did on the community benefits program and the possibility that it could impact development, and to that extent, I'm in favor of these changes because of the fact that they create some daylight between the density bonus and the inclusionary zoning route.
I'm going to make an even more radical proposal. Why don't we just not have, have those be zero and zero and have part of the community benefits low-income housing and give a lot of points to that so that, you know, there's a good chance we get... I'm afraid that this is not enough daylight between what we're saying here and the density bonus program. And I think that it's not going to dissuade developers from grabbing the density bonus program, and then our community benefits program is moot. You know, they don't have to do anything. I think we want to push, I agree with you. I think we want to push them towards the community benefits program. I think it's a great program.
Other commissioners? What are the numerical implications? If, I'm just afraid that we're already so low that it, with the rounding error in the math with a 30-unit or 50-unit building, it's not going to actually change the number significantly.
In terms of...
Unit production.
Yeah, so with, you know, this table kind of identifies what the differences would be. You know, at 3%, you're only getting one very low-income unit or two low-income units. And so, you know, and even with a 50-unit project, it's not a whole lot here. And I understand, you know, kind of what we're struggling with is we want to see low-income housing, we want to see housing affordable to workforce, and, you know, we can certainly decide to do that, and we can set higher thresholds. What those higher thresholds are going to mean is people take density bonus and they don't take the community benefits program. I think, you know, if you, if you look at the, you know, the difference between revenues for those, you know, those different inclusionary units, once you start getting up to a certain threshold, the first threshold you cross is going to be, you know, folks moving into density bonus, being able to create all of the same number of market rate units that they could create to begin with without any kind of inclusionary requirement, and then creating more units on top of that. Even though they're less than they would have gotten from the market rate, they are still getting more than they would have gotten from maximum density. That's the attractive component to a density bonus, right? The next threshold that you're going to cross, if you keep raising the inclusionary zoning requirement, is that you're just going to, you're going to stop projects from happening. There's only a limited number of developers who are really dedicated and interested in that niche market of affordable housing. It takes a lot of expertise to get into and to understand and to do effectively, and there just aren't many people out there that are doing it. And so I think that if you set the inclusionary zoning requirements for very low and low-income housing too high, there's going to be too much extracted from, you know, the revenues on the project that they're just not going to pencil.
I feel like this is an area where, from my perspective, this math makes sense, and we can talk about this almost endlessly, and we're never going to really know until projects start getting built. And I feel like of all the different places where we've talked about the concept of a dial and being able to turn the dial, if things don't look like they're working out the way we hoped, this envisioned payoff, trade-off between inclusionary zoning and state density bonus is one of the places where, to me, it makes sense to just, this makes sense, there's some daylight, let's give it a try, and the only way we're going to find out is by giving it a try. We're not going to be able to crunch sufficient numbers to answer all the variables and without giving it a go. So my vote is that we approve this, get this recommended to the city council, and move on to another issue. And I'm wondering, does anyone object to that path? Judith?
It's not necessarily an objection, but I've said before that it, we're basically quibbling about one unit, which is a big quibble, and that perhaps inclusionary zoning may not be our most powerful affordable housing tool, and we have other more powerful affordable housing tools, including the range of subsidies that a good plan will allow us to get access to and to assist developers who are interested in providing that housing. It's going to come with some money, and I guess it's going to come with the type of expedited process that, you know, we've now convinced ourself we can provide, which is worth money to a developer. We don't know how much. I also think that the state housing affordability laws and the whole array of YIMBY policies is so much in flux that quibbling over one unit out of 50 here is... We're going to come up with different numbers a year or two from now anyway, and perhaps the important thing is that we are willing to reintroduce inclusionary policies into our general plan and our zoning after we got rid of them, what, 12 years ago, was Whether or not they're immediately useful, it makes that policy tool available to us in ways that, you know, we can adjust as numbers change and...
I think that makes the most sense.
So I, you know, I don't have super strong feelings about it. My tendency would be to say, you know, it's a pretty weak policy tool to begin with, let's just keep the higher numbers and see how it falls out, and don't give away our policy tool by setting our numbers too low. Dantangney also made, I think it was in, partly in, not in jest, but in a hypothetical approach, if we set our housing density numbers really low, then we come out with density and numbers that are something that are more what our policies say we want rather than what the state density bonuses say you can get. I don't want to go that route. I feel it's kind of cynical, but that could kind of help cut to the chase in terms of making projects pencil out by using our benefits program...
Yeah.
...rather than extremely low state mandated numbers.
We have a majority to make that recommendation. I'm looking at the time and seeing that we have not only more to discuss, but that I also want to make sure that we have time for public comment. So I don't think any of the rest of the issues that we may want to discuss are going to be things that we get through in 10 minutes or five minutes. So at this point, I'm going to shift to taking public comment. So, given that, each speaker will have three minutes. Feel free to state your name for the record. May we have the first speaker? Go first, Joanne, there you go.
I don't know what to say on this, so I'm ceding my time to Fred because he knows what to say on this.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, commissioners. There's two big things to talk about. One is the, what's going on with the potential dissolution of the Gateway Area Plan. In my view, there's, I think we can all agree, there's lots of work that you've done, which is applicable citywide, and we look forward to that being citywide, but I feel that the point is being missed, that this has been told to the public for three years that this is what we're doing, and to change it now seems really duplicitous, I'll say. To rely on codes to implement policies, I don't trust that. I think the people of the Arcata don't trust that. There's a reason why Gateway was chosen, this specific region was chosen. As Commissioner Mayor said, this is an experiment. I think it's going to work. We all think it's going to work, but we want to see it. I would say, after, three years after a building's built, two or three buildings are built, then look at putting it into the general plan, but not now. The, one question is, what happens with coastal commission approval? Does the coastal commission then have to approve the entire general plan? I have no clue. Some other commissioners may know. The way we're doing it now, at least we know where we stand with the Gateway Plan when the coastal commission makes their decisions, okay? I'll switch gears to inclusionary zoning. First, I greatly appreciate the director's work moving forward on this. It's, you know, a lot of good numbers. I want to make a few specific points and then some general points. The idea of allocating $120 for utilities for all-sized apartments is convenient on a spreadsheet, it doesn't represent reality. Also, the minimum water bill in Arcata is now $93.67, almost $94, so to talk about having a utility allotment of $120 is not real world. With utilities goes up, the rent figures drop because we're looking at the total, but two. And it's not our concern so much, but using 2080 hours per year to establish hourly rates is also questionable. It involves people working five, eight-hour days, 52 weeks of the year, no vacations, no sick time. A realistic figure, of course, is about 90% to 35% of that. When we look at these figures of 30% of income, I want to reiterate that this is gross income. When you look at taxes and net income, it translates to about 44%. So if a person's paying 30% of their gross income for housing and utilities, it's around 44%. So it's a burden. The statement that people in Arcata should be able to afford median rate, I disagree with. I think housing is going to be a problem. In terms of, yeah, and I appreciate the director bringing actual Arcata rents rather than yeah, and I appreciate the director bringing actual Arcata rents rather than Humboldt County averages. In terms of inclusionary zoning, one thing-- throughout this whole process for me, I thought my time would be better spent looking into low-income housing and doing all the hours I do investigating that. I haven't done that. Redwood City has 20% inclusionary zoning. Santa Cruz has 20%. They're asking for 25%. The question is, how do they do it? I have no idea. Now, they have more wealth, of course. The-- I want to thank greatly Commissioner Lehman. He made a lot of astute comments. I think you and I think similar in terms of an overall numerical view. The 55-year figure is ridiculous, in my opinion. Developers are looking for 12-year and 15-year figures. But the one-- the difference between 6% and 9% is, you're saying, what percentage does that mean? You know, it's $210,000 on the screen, but it's around a third of a percent in terms of the total gross of the rents. I find, while I appreciate everything that has been done, there's way too many assumptions about this figure or that figure or this figure. If we looked at it from a real-life perspective, it would be a lot more productive. The use of the word daylight, you know, that one or two units, that's not really what we're doing. And again, how do other cities do this? The comments about just relying upon state bonus law, that may be the way. The answer is, we don't know, but I'm not convinced that this is going to provide much difference in terms of real affordable housing for the people of Arcata. I'm not saying it's easy, but I-- and I appreciate your work. Thanks.
Thanks for your comments, Fred. Anyone else here in the gallery like to comment? Commenters online, David?
I don't see any online.
Okay. Given that, we will-- I, as always, appreciate everyone's work tonight and all the commenters and everyone that takes part in our discussions. Moving on to correspondence and communications, do we have any correspondence from either Planning Commission members or from staff?
I have just a quick notification for the Planning Commission that at your next meeting, you'll be looking at your annual report that you'll be giving to the city council in January. Typically, what I've done in the past for developing the annual reports, and I don't think I'm the first director to do this, but I go back through all of the agendas that you've done over the last year, and I list out, you know, the kinds of projects that you worked on, the types of, you know, decisions that you made, and, you know, and then the chair goes and presents that to the city council. And, you know, it strikes me that, you know, it's a little bit robotic and, you know, just dull to do that. I think it's an important component of the annual report, but I guess I would just-- the reason I'm bringing this up now is because I'd like you to think about, you know, things that you'd like to include in your annual report this time that may be a little bit more, you know, tangible, things that you were proud of, that you wanted to make sure that the city council knew. So we can add a new section that's up front and center that's a little bit more, you know, tangible experiences that you had as planning commissioners, and then move sort of the list of things that you did to the back of that and de-emphasize that. Another thing that we also do in the annual report is try and, you know, connect the dots between what the city council's goals were for the work that you-- that's within your purview. So I think that can be, you know, certainly a component of it this time and to maybe enhance that section as well. So just letting you know, next time you'll be looking at your annual report, and I'd appreciate you to, you know, think about between now and then the kinds of things that you personally would like to see in that annual report.
David, has the session with the city council been scheduled yet?
The next study session has not yet been scheduled.
There being no further business, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everyone.